...to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, would you please take role?
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Lasky.
Here.
Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Keck.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Ruzga.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Community development director.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
Role call complete.
Thank you. Citizens comments on agenda-related items. Any citizen with correspondence to be distributed to council should provide items to city clerk prior to the start of the meeting or after the meeting has adjourned, limited to five minutes.
How's everybody?
Good.
Alright, so I just want to speak on the Bike Night event, our karaoke event. I just wanted to touch on some points. I did attend the DDA meeting and we kind of addressed some things. I wrote a letter, like I want to clarify, I wrote the letter. John did look it over, but I wrote a letter that accompanied it, just kind of addressing some of the things. I do want to clarify that in that letter, I was not trying to assume that anyone disliked vets or anyone disliked bikers. I'm just merely stating that I would like to see us have an open mind around late night events that are run respectfully. Couple of years ago, we had a local business trying to run one and it, in my opinion, wasn't going well. So I did some things on my own to try to pull away some of their entertainment. I mean, I know that sounds bad, but it was just not, it was not ran well. So I hired their DJ, kind of tried to make it run respectfully and do something different. And I think it's been going well. We had some pickups in the beginning and we addressed them. But it's kind of the same thing with Bike Night. It's a two-hour event. Every other Thursday, we're going to run it respectfully. We're going to abide by things within reason. I mean, obviously, as long as it's something that's everyone's comfortable with. Anyways, I just wanted to ask a few questions that maybe you guys could reflect on before making decisions. Have you personally, like, visited one of our late night events or one of the downtown Bike Night events? And if you haven't, where are the assumptions coming from? Are they personal opinions or are they just hearsay? You know, like, have you experienced it down there? We had a very good turnout. We had a lot of families down and we're all kind of trying to figure out where all these negative things are coming from. So, like, yeah, that's just kind of it. Like, have you been there or not? Are the standards that you guys are asking us to abide by, are they also applied to every other event permit that's being asked or every other downtown event? Are the same, are we going to be held by the same standards or are they held by the same standards? And if not, like, why? Is it because of assumptions? Is it because of opinions or is it because of facts? I'm very factual, like, that's who I am. So I always think, like, where are the facts at here? You know, and I'll try to write them out. And I try to self-evaluate too, like, is there something that we're all missing? Is there something I'm missing as business owner that people are genuinely concerned about? And how can I fix that? Because we want to have this event, so I will fix it if it needs to be fixed. But a lot of the concerns brought up were very opinion-based and they were very, there was no facts there. We didn't receive one complaint about garbage. We received a couple of noise complaints that John and I quickly complied with and made sure it was, you know, addressed. But the other ones, we just, I'm looking back and I'm trying to figure out where their complaints, did anyone show up? Did anyone come and approach me? I got no complaints at all about the other things. So as I tried to address them, I still went back, like, I'm addressing these, but it was already something that we were doing. So just, you know, just that. I'm hoping that you guys can just think, think about it and kind of evaluate it. And yeah, we're really hoping to have it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew Stafford, 275 First Street, the DDA Director, as well as the Director of Economic Development. I just want to touch on two pieces on today's agenda. First off, I want to make note that the DDA did submit a approval or a recommendation for approval for Talk About It's Bike Night. They were gracious enough to come down to the DDA meeting and kind of stand in front of us, give a full explanation. It went very, very well. And so I just want to make sure that's clear to council. I know it's on the consent agenda, but just want to make sure that you all are aware that the DDA is in support of this event. As well as just a little explanation on Don Tequila's social district request. That property already had a social district license issued to it. It is the changing of hands or LLC that the liquor license is under that requires us to go back and reissue that local government approval for that social district permit. So I also just want to make that clear because there may have been a little confusion with that property already having held a social district license. And so that's why that is needed, that we need council's approval again. So thank you.
Thank you.
John Hosrich, Chapter Commander of Combat Veterans Motorcycle Association, Chapter 35-7. I hope you'll excuse the attire, I am on my bike today, so I know I look rather scary. The citizenry, I even brought my attack dog with me, this is Ava. I did want to speak about some concerns I had, not necessarily for appearances or Bike Nights going forward, it's on the consent agenda, and I'm hopeful that the council will just simply vote it for. But I do have concerns regarding the technicalities and legalities of giving the DDA a voice in this. That is a quasi-governmental body created under Public Act 197, and their bylaws don't have any allowance for what they're doing now to give recommendations on permits. And so that would certainly have to be addressed. I also have concerns that it may be an unconstitutional delegation of this body's legislative and executive functions to the DDA. When I spoke to them, because I was at the DDA meeting last week, when I mentioned that any recommendation or permitting from a city body or a quasi-governmental body like them had to be based on content neutrality, it seemed to really not resonate with people. There was one member of the DDA who even said on the record that what he was concerned about at first with Bike Nights was optics. Well, that's the definition of content bias. And so I would caution this body in allowing the DDA to speak for it regarding who is doing things downtown. I'm certain that you can address this with your city attorney. I just wanted to make certain that somebody brought it to your attention, that that may be an issue that you want to look at. Other than that, I've got nothing. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Consent agenda, all items marked with an asterisk are considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval, any member of council may have an item removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Items include approval of minutes, payroll, invoice, consideration of ordinance 25-04 to amend Chapter 1040 combined water supply and sewage disposal system of the City of Manistee, Michigan codified ordinances, consideration of ordinance 25-05 to amend Chapter 1420 Still DeRose Hale Single State Construction Code of the City of Manistee, Michigan codified ordinances, consideration of ordinance 25-06 to amend Chapter 1060 garbage and rubbish collection and disposal of the City of Manistee, Michigan codified ordinances, consideration of TJ's block party and concert, consideration of requests from Talk About It to hold a bikes, a series of Bike Nights, karaoke fundraisers throughout the summer. At this time, council could take action to approve this consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Heather, would you please take role?
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruzga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of proclaiming and acknowledging 99 Pine Street as a registered historic site honoring the legacy and memory of Annie Mae and Raymond A. Smith. At this time, council could take action to proclaim and acknowledge 99 Pine Street as a registered historic site and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the proclamation. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion on this? Heather, would you please, do you have something?
Well, I was just going to note that it was in the newspaper, but the event actually begins on June 21st at 1:00 PM at the Ramstil Regional Art Center. And there's going to be some celebrities there. And we're going to walk then down to the location at 99 Pine Street. So I hope we have a lot of people attending. Thank you.
So the 21st or the 22nd? Which day is that? Is it?
21st.
Okay, yeah, it should be nice.
Heather, would you please take role?
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruzga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of entering into a five-year agreement to lease two slips at the City Marina to the United States Coast Guard. The city has current agreement to lease Marina slips to the United States Coast Guard. This agreement expires at the end of August 2025. A new five-year lease has been prepared and current slip rentals rates in the amount of $11,280 for the first year with an annual escalator of 3%. The city attorney has reviewed this agreement. At this time, council could take action to approve a five-year agreement with the United States Department of Homeland Security to lease two Marina slips for the, for the Coast Guard. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
And I'll second. Any discussion?
I'm glad to see it's for only five years. So the Coast Guard, don't they use, currently use Slip 1?
So I believe they have two slips and I don't know the numbering up hand.
They use two slips at the City Marina.
Oh.
Slip 1 is one of them.
Okay. And then, so they've been using Slip 4 right along?
The current lease is 20 years. Two years ago, they amended that lease to add a second slip when the station expanded and their area of operations expanded. And so for the past two years, they've had two slips.
Okay, thanks.
Heather, would you please take role?
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruzga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of the Manistee City Police Department purchasing and/or upgrading surveillance cameras. The city, the Manistee City Police Department was awarded $27,677 by the Local Revenue Sharing Board to purchase surveillance camera systems for the First Street Beach House, Fifth Avenue Beach House, Riverwalk, Maple Street Bridge, City Marina, and outside the downtown bathrooms. The City of Manistee has budgeted $15,000 for this project. The combined funds available for this project are $42,677, which will cover the cost of equipment installation and one year of service and maintenance. At this time, council could take action to approve the Manistee City Police Department request for the approval to spend $42,677 on surveillance camera project through the ESP security. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion?
Josh, do you want to tell us a little bit about that? What we're getting?
Sure. The City of Manistee has had security cameras on their properties for over a decade or so. And so those, the systems have been kind of piecemealed together. And so I really set out two years ago to try to secure funding. As you know, technology is extremely expensive. So this, this process, what the project focus was, is finding a vendor that could give us all of our cameras on one platform. And then if a camera breaks, needs to be replaced, we have someone to call. This was highlighted two years ago when a camera broke and we had to figure out, well, seven years ago when we bought that camera, whose camera is it? It's a mess. So we wanted to have a service agreement that if we have something broken, if we want to add to the current system, we have a vendor that we can call and they're very responsive. And so we actually got to put eyes on this camera system in different jurisdictions, so you can actually see the product best you can. For us, the reason why we installed, I'm guessing, over a decade ago is it helps to deter crime when we have property crimes that occur. It helps the police department to solve those crimes, provides crucial evidence. It's just a matter of the last two years, finding a good funding source for this project.
Josh, where do the cameras hook into? The Sheriff's Department, the 911 border down here?
No, we have access to the city. They're on city property, so we have access to the cameras.
They're not monitored, though. They're just, you just watch them after an event occurs. Is that correct?
Yeah. To me, security cameras and surveillance cameras are kind of synonymous. We don't, we're not surveilling people, we're not constantly monitoring, we don't have people to do that. So typically what happens is if we have a report of a crime or an incident, it allows us to go back and review that to see if we have crucial evidence of that.
How many days' storage will you have?
It's going to be either 15 days or 30 days. We're going to work that out with the vendors. So again, more storage, more money.
Okay.
So we're trying to find a cost-effective solution based on our previous experience.
Well, I got my fingers crossed for 30 days.
Yeah, in a perfect world, it would be, you know, two months.
Yeah.
In fact, now, the more, more room you want, the more, more it costs, unfortunately. So, yeah. So we're excited to be able to get this grant fund for this project and so that we can replace our cameras and hopefully if we have something happen, we can provide evidence for prosecution.
Thank you. Heather, would you please take role?
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruzga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of local governmental approval for a social district permit for Love Wines LLC. The Manistee Downtown Development Authority would like to request support and approval for Love Wines LLC to receive local government approval for a social district permit. This will allow Love Wines to sell alcoholic beverages that can be consumed in that identified social district area. At this time, council could take action to approve the resolution supporting the request from Love Wine, Love Wines LLC to join the existing City of Manistee social district. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruzga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of local governmental approval for a social district permit for Don Tequila Mexican Restaurant LLC. The Manistee Downtown Development Authority would like to request support for the approval of Don Tequila Mexican Restaurant LLC to receive the local government approval for a social district permit. This will allow Don Tequila Mexican Restaurant to sell alcoholic beverages that can be consumed in that identified social district area. At this time, council could take action to approve the resolution supporting the request from Don Tequila Mexican Restaurant LLC to join the existing City of Manistee social district. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I guess my only concern was it's just listed as an LLC, so there's nothing to really designate its location. So, I mean...
The other one was an LLC too.
Yeah. But at least the, it's, the sign on their, their front says, yeah, that's, that's true. So I, either one, I guess you have to know the location. And then I guess in the back of my mind, I think, well, just because it's approved as an LLC, what would stop them from moving to First Street Beach and saying, well, I have a social district permit?
Liquor Control Commission, I think, would, yeah. Liquor Control Commission's very strict on...
Yeah, I guess that would...
Licenses.
So to answer your question a little bit, within all the documentation, they need to provide the liquor control.
So you have it.
Yeah, so all the documents do explicitly list addresses.
Okay.
Just for the resolution's sake, that it's only listed as an LLC in here, but in the backend, all the documents that they need to fill out and that the city needs to fill out, that go to the state for this approval, have address, addresses listed on it. They're not able to, yeah, move down the road and keep the same permit. That would take...
I know, might as well kind of silly.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
I'll just add that that's the common area, that's the social district, and any license he has to be located within it.
Heather, would you please take role?
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruzga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of approving a temporary activity permit. Echo His Love is requesting a temporary activity permit to allow for sheltering of the homeless population located in the City of Manistee in one location throughout the winter. This would allow people experiencing homelessness to be sheltered for five months from November 1st, 2025, until April 30th, 2026, at Echo His Love Main Campus located at 525 Michael Street in Manistee, Michigan. Temporary activity permits are allowable via the zoning ordinance Section 522 and Section 507. At this time, council could take action to approve the temporary activity permit requested by Echo His Love to allowing for sheltering for homeless population in the City of Manistee at one location for winter. Is there a motion?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I just have a question. I don't know, I know where Michael Street is and where this property is located. It's very much in my neighborhood, and I don't have a problem with that. To me, it doesn't look like fit housing. Can somebody assure me that this is clean and decent housing?
You're talking about the shelter?
The shelter.
Yeah, I'm going to have an open house in August. I'm hoping August, so you're welcome to come see what it looks like.
Okay, I'd like that.
So we, we pride ourselves in making sure this place looks good, you know, because we don't...
Because from the outside...
Right.
It does not.
Of course, of course. But we're, if you go by there, we're cleaning things up.
Okay.
There's things that run down, because this is an old building.
Yes.
So we're making sure, we're putting a privacy screen on the fence. We've been putting walls up downstairs, new flooring, everything. So it's, you'll be shocked.
And this is the, the nun's home, as I know it, the convent? Okay.
Yeah, so we pride ourselves to make this place look good, because when you, when you go down inside, it looks pretty good. On the outside, of course, it doesn't look good, and that's kind of like us, you know? But, but the inside, it looks...
Okay, and I just wanted to feel convent.
Sure, so, yep. And like I said, we're going to have an open house somewhere in August. And on the paper, it said five months, but it should say six months.
Okay, so it's, the dates are correct.
Correct.
It just says six, okay.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Actually, he's improved it a lot. I have been there, and the inside, new mattresses, new bedding, a lot of new changes, new paint on the walls. It's actually very nice on the inside and in as well.
I warmed it up, and it doesn't, from the outside, it does not look... Okay, I'm good with that, thank you.
Heather, would you please take role?
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruzga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Now we will have a utilities report from Bruce Banks and James Riley.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm James Riley, lead operator, lead water operator. I'm here to give the Water Department annual report. I've been in the Water Department 10 years and in the lead role for about two. Also in the Water Department are Evan Finsky and Austin Buschinsky, both with two years of service. Austin has recently passed his S4D4 water license through the state. In 2024, we pump 304 million gallons of water. That's enough to fill 460 Olympic swimming pools. A normal day for us includes service calls, mistig locates, compliance sampling, record keeping, and whatever else springs up. The Water Department reads and maintains 4,200 meters in the system. We read every day with a collector mounted in the work truck. It can help us identify leaks and high bills in the home as they're happening. We flush fire hydrants spring and fall with problem areas more often. This flushes out sediment such as iron and brings fresh water into the water mains. We perform analysis on the water in the system six days per week to ensure the residuals of the chemicals we add, such as chlorine, phosphate, and fluoride are within state specs. Water quality parameter testing is required by the state and occurs every two weeks on our source water. It measures things like chloride, sulfates, and the pH. It's used to describe the condition of our source water. The city has a cross connection program that helps ensure contamination doesn't enter the system through points of connection or leaks by the installation of backflow preventers where required. Our wellhead protection program minimizes the potential for contamination of our source water by identifying and protecting areas around any of our four city water wells. Our annual water quality report is available by brochure or on the city's website. It has information on our water as well as drinking water in general. The city shares two connection points with Philer City's water system. The valves can be opened in an emergency to supply either system with water. Our 2024 lead and copper samples were all well below the action level for, with the highest being four parts per billion of lead and .7 parts per million of copper. We maintain over 55, or 53 miles of water main. This includes taps, valves, service lines, and main bricks. The city's service line pilot program is required by the state and is used to identify the size and material of all water lines in the system. We currently know 2,800 of the 3,200 publicly owned water lines in the city and are continuing to explore more. The water main extension connecting Third Street to Spruce Street that recently happened, that eliminated two dead ends in the water main and added a fire hydrant to Third Street, increasing water quality and fire flow for that area. Any questions?
When will that Spruce Street switch be done, with the road open?
When will the switch, what?
Well, when will Spruce be open again for...
They did some paving today. I'm assuming that's going to be tomorrow if it doesn't rain, but that's just an assumption. Very soon.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Bruce. I've been with the city for 24 years now. I went from wastewater to water, back to wastewater. And I'm here to give the annual status of the Clean Water Recovery Facility or the Wastewater Treatment Plan. To start out, of course, me. Down there with me, working with me, Sean Taylor, who's been here 13 years, and Jacob Muttler and Jason Kaminski have both been here three years now. They're all good workers. One problem with us four is you got three mechanics and a common sense guy, and I'm looking for a lab person. So when Sean leaves, that's, that's what I'm going for. This is an overview, I got this from Spicer, I don't want to take credit for it, and Jeff ordered it to me, so. But this is the, that's where I work, and that's, that's the footprint of the wastewater treatment plan. I know you don't hear a lot about it until there's a big money problem or there's a problem that I'm affected by. But there's a lot going on there. And I do want to invite any one of you, I know I had two of the beautiful young ladies in the last year, come visit me. in the last year come visit me. Anybody else wants to come down, I'll walk you through the entire process of how it works. You'll have a way better understanding of why we spend so much money and how it works, of course. Last year, we treated 375 million gallons of water. Now, James just said he pumped 304 million gallons, and you got to figure about 100 million of his is going to sprinkler systems that are going into your lawn, right? So where's the rest come from? A lot of that's I and I infiltration. A lot of you people in town still have sump pumps that are connected into the sanitary sewer system. That is not legal. And we tried smoke testing. Well, they got smart years ago. The plumbers did, and they put S traps in between, and now the smoke doesn't come out. Anyways, that's where that water's coming from. Prior to 2020, which is what you see up there, it was it was much higher. We were in the 600 above 600 million gallons of water. That was directly connected to the higher lake levels, and that was pre-pipelining, which was huge in return of dividends. If I could turn back the hands of time a few years, I think we would do more pipelining, actually. But I we're in good shape right now as long as the good Lord keeps that lake down. The purpose of the Wastewater Treatment Plan is to manage water discharged from homes, businesses, industries, to remove the specific pollutants to acceptable levels. This ensures compliance with national environmental laws and regulations. We're staffed seven days a week. We perform full laboratory five days a week, Monday through Friday, emergency basis on weekends. We operate and maintain a variety of pumps, mixers, blowers, from the new headworks all the way up to the discharge. This is how the state bases our performance by BOD, which is the amount of dissolved oxygen it takes to remove the biosolids. So I'm we're pumping over 2 million square feet of oxygen a day into our aeration tanks, and that keeps our bugs happy, energetic, ready to run, eat. And then when they're doing that, they need to consume calories, and their calories is organic waste that we want to get rid of. The suspended solids, the second one, is the 95%. The 5% that's not removed is mostly dissolved solids. That's your sugars and salts that we cannot get out of the water once they're dissolved. They're there. The ammonia, the reason we remove ammonia, and it's highly regulated, is because that's through the nitrogen cycle. So when it rains, that drop of water grabs the nitrogen through the air, because that's where the nitrogen gas is at, goes into the ground, gets into the grass, into the soil, and then there's nitrogen bacteria breaks it down, turns into ammonia. At that point, the plants suck it up, and they turn green and flowerish, and everybody's happy. Same with phosphorus. I think we all know that has a garden or plant or whatever, you know, the 10 10 10 fertilizer stuff. But we want to limit that as much as possible to go out in the lake, because I would do the same thing to the lake as you're going to do to your lawn, and that's growing tons of weeds, which would block the sunlight to get to the bottom, lower the dissolved oxygen in the lake, kill the fish. The decaying matter would basically turn that whole lake green. And I think you've all heard of the Toledo Lake Huron. There's some serious problems with that. So we have we're much way under compliance in all four of those. I'm pretty happy with that. We are certified for drinking water analysis. I do all of James's. We do Filer Cities, some of the tribes, do some private wells here and there. And we can do, if there's a customer, a resident of the city really wanted to check his water, that's absolutely could do it by emails, bbanks@manisteymi.gov. We do minimize mercury. We cannot remove mercury. Mercury is a heavy metal, obviously. And what that ends up doing is that settles into our sludge, and that's pumped into the farm fields and and removed that way. The dentist dentist office, they have an amalgam remover now. That's how so there's no more mercury going into the system from a dentist's office. But this year, we were about point three nanograms a liter higher than we were last year, which is a lot, because I measure those in parts per trillion. A part per trillion is one second in 31,700 years. Let that sink in for just a second. Okay, that's part per trillion. The reason last year that that mercury was higher, that I can come up with, is because we had an exceptional year of fishing here, and there's a lot of mercury in them fish out there. And when they clean them at that fish station, they grind them up, and it goes into our First Street Lift Station and ends up getting to me about two hours later. So we're way under compliance for that. Doing good. This is our land app, the biosolids. We do this twice a year, in the spring and fall. We have four different fields that we go to, and the farmers in the end are really happy to get this because it provides a good nutrient and soil conditioner. Basically, they don't have to pay for fertilizer for their field. You see, there's 200 pounds of nitrogen per acre and 270 pounds of phosphorus per acre. Last year, we did. I did have the opportunity to have the Oneakuma High School science class come through for a tour this year, and I would, you know, any other science class that would like to come, I'd more than welcome them. Or any class for that. I don't have any science. But this is First Street Lift Station. I'm sure everybody has seen that when you're looking at that, and then you're driving by that. Anyways, we operate and maintain 14 of these lift stations from Filer City, which is by the old Kmart, all the way to East Lake by the Bluffs Trailer Park. No, sorry. We are having a big upgrade, hopefully sooner than later. This IPS, this is an intermediate pump station. This is inside the plant. This is what a regular pump station like the Third Street cabinet would look like. It's relays and controls and everything that goes back to our SCADA. You're lifting water from this level, getting it to this level, and it's a constant float. It never stops, constantly running. While this this pump, when it breaks, we do not have parts to fix it right now. It was put in many years ago, and we're trying to put a new cabinet together right now, and it's hard to get parts. So I do have a backup plan, so not to fear, but cross your fingers on that one. We're constantly upgrading the SCADA Supervisor Control and Data Acquisition. We just had some new software put in. That Spicer's going to grab that. And our rain events to provide information to the state to prove that our headwork system works. Believe it or not, that's been in use since September of '22 now. We haven't proved it 100%. Will I think it work? Yeah, it's going to work. But we have only filled one tank two thirds full. There's three tanks there. And once we get to the third tank, then I got to start worrying about that water going out to the Lake Michigan or to Manistee Lake. So what that is, is Spicer wrote up a RDS remedial design system. They think 25-year storm, which in our little spot of West Michigan here would be a three or 3.9 inches of rain in 24 hours, we would grab here. Now, you don't they're not taking into effect groundwater right there. The previous rain event, how fast it comes down in that 24 hours. But basically, that's what you're looking at to fill all three tanks, and then hopefully things are under control. I know you I don't want to beat this down. You guys have heard this, I think, from Jeff and Spicer. We did put a new digester cover on last late last summer, early fall. That was without the digester cover, and that tank's full right there. And of course, the beautiful one now. Basically, you could have left it open if we were farther south, but I'm more worried about and the city's more worried about freezing. You know, if we get a winter like we had in 13 and 14, both back to back, that's going to freeze up, and now you're in big trouble. So a couple of things before I go to questions here, I wanted to talk to you guys. Another security cybersecurity threat came through today. The EPA is all over this. So is the state of Michigan. They send it to me. They're trying to break into SCADA systems constantly. You know, so it's always been we do have a great IT program to keep them on our toes, on their toes. So one thing that is just being found out right now through some studies is downstream effluence. So we where the plan is, we push our water 190 feet out into that lake, and then it basically goes in the middle of the lake where it's at, and then goes down out to Lake Michigan eventually. What they're finding in towns and villages that have small streams, a lot of them don't have a lake like I have to put it in, they're putting it into a creek or a stream or a ditch, basically, and then it goes downhill eventually to a water source. Finding the fish, aquatic frogs, everything is being affected because the amount of prescription drugs that people are taking today, a lot of it's birth control. And what it is, is these fish are not reproducing for a mile downstream at all. And a lot of them are just walking zombies, they're calling them. And the study's just going on right now. So you're going to hear a lot more of this in the future. Another thing you're going to hear a lot more in the future, you know, right now, the current thing is PFOs. That's about to exit. And the next one coming up is microplastics. Because if you have a bottle of water in front of you, there's up of 300 microplastics in that bottle of water, and they're they're tiny, almost dissolved, and they don't know the long term effects yet because that's why you're not hearing about it. But you're going to hear about it real fast. And there's one town in Michigan, they have so many microplastics coming into their wastewater plant that they're they're not allowing the biosolids going to farm fields anymore. So they're making them dry it and then haul it to the local dump as in big old blocks of dried poo, basically. And it's costing them upwards of $50,000 a month to do that. So these are things that you got to think about in the future as new regulations are coming down from the state and EPA. It's not going to get any cheaper, that's for sure. Is there any questions?
What would a new machine cost, Bruce?
The oh, the drying machine itself? That this would be millions of dollars of investment. And then how do you fund, you know, taking it to dump? That's this is big money. We're not to that place yet. I haven't tested. We're not there yet. You're talking places with industries that are dumping plastics into the wastewater, and they're supposed to have their own preliminary treatment. And it's a little bit down the road, but you'll see it. Yeah.
Anybody else?
Clear as mud.
Yeah. All right. Thanks a lot.
Bruce?
Thanks, Bruce.
Thank you.
Assistant's comment. This is an opportunity for citizens in attendance to comment on municipal services, activities, or other areas of city involvement, limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to public to council will not be publicly read. Anybody?
Hi, Seth Pratt, 355 Second Street, Manistee. Good evening. I just wanted to come and talk to council about the property located on the corner of Third and Walnut Street. I've owned my home for probably 15 years, maybe longer. That house has been an issue for 15 years, maybe longer. Over that time, I think there's been at least five owners, and every time, I'm sure myself as well as other neighbors are excited that maybe somebody's going to buy it and fix it up. And every time, it gets worse. I'm wondering what we can do about the blight, because that's past the point of blight. I stopped by tonight to check it out, make sure there weren't any huge improvements. Since I walked by a couple of days ago, there are extension cords running out the windows. There is a three unit rental there. You have extension cords running out of one unit into the other to provide electricity. There are holes that raccoons and squirrels are coming out of. One unit was recently rented to a traveling nurse who had to move out because of black mold, she said, and water that leaked from the ceiling of the upstairs apartment. Myself and other neighbors have talked. Many of us have reached out to city officials. We either don't get returned phone calls, or we get different messages. I can tell you I've been to the building inspector two years ago of this property. I don't know how this passes inspection. I used to have rentals. My philosophy was always I would never rent something I wouldn't live in myself. I wouldn't rent an animal in that house. If you have not been by it, I encourage you to. This seems like a great opportunity for the land bank or somebody. But I really encourage that we look at blight and blight enforcement, because this is a historic property that every time doesn't get better. So if it sells to a new owner, there should be stipulations on this needs to be fixed. Now we start all over. I don't know. It's an eyesore, and I have an issue. I mean, we all try to be good neighbors. If my neighbor was in the hospital or had a family emergency, I would think nothing of it. I'd cut the grass, whatever it took. But when somebody is making money and running that as a business, they are responsible for that property. Why that's still being allowed to be rented, I have no idea, because the health department should be involved. I cannot believe there are not health codes being violated. So if you haven't been by it, I would really encourage you to. While we're talking about blight, small thing, but is there a way the DPW or somebody could pull the weeds at the ram stuff? We're doing a lot of work. That corner's looking beautiful. And then you have all these weeds, like they're getting up to like waist-high on the building. It seems like when we're there cutting the grass and weed whacking, we could just quick pull those. I'd be willing to do it, but I don't want to get in trouble. So maybe. I'm just thinking it's a prominent corner. Holidays are coming up. So I thank you for your time. I really look forward to maybe getting some answers on how we can move forward. I know as a group of neighbors, we have talked about putting together a petition. Many neighbors were going to come tonight, but they had a conflict. So I anticipate some will be at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, my name's Jeff Kiss, and I own two awake walnut, the house that sits right next to this shithole that you guys allow to just be taken over. I've lived there for I've lived in my house now for 12 years. I've owned that property for 17, maybe. You know, when I bought the place that I live in now, it looked just like that one did. I spent years redoing my house, you know, all by myself, because I have the knowledge to do it. And, you know, I've lived, I've watched the lady, the girl that he said, the traveling nurse, we used to, me and the other neighbor, cut her grass because nobody else would do it for her. You know, you go over to that that place right now, they cut it two weeks ago. The grass was this damn tall. They ran over it with a lawnmower, and then they walked away, left it as a hayfield. There's weeds from a porch that used to be there that the city said cease and desist on a year and a half, but going hasn't been touched. You've got black mold in there, I guarantee it. You got a upstairs stairway that sits like this, and there's people walking up and down them stairs. No way it meets code or anything to it. The city has neglected this property. They keep raising my taxes, and they tell me I can't do this, and I can't do that. But they won't do shit about anything around here with these slum lords. You drive by that property, and you'll see a sign in my front yard that says slum lords wanted. Contact the city. You know, I've lived through this dump for 15 years now. It's ridiculous. And this guy passes it to that guy, and that guy passes it to this guy. Nobody comes up with any answers. Nobody enforces anything. Do we have? Do we have ordinance in the city? Do we have blight in this city? Show it to me, because I haven't seen it. You know, and it's just past ridiculous. I'm going to take that sign, and I'm going to make about 50 copies of it, and I'm going to stick them all around this town and come Fourth of July when we have all these wonderful people come in, come to Manistee for vacation, let them see what this town's really like. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've addressed the blight issue, of course, in the past, and 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 I can really empathize with with Jeff. My blood pressure would probably go right off the scale and blow my pacemaker out if I had to step out on the front porch and look at that pig sty every day. That's as bad as 820 Maple, by the way. It's just time. We've got the legal beagle sitting right there. This council need, and I've said this before, you need to request that the legal firm put together an ordinance that has some meat in it, number one. It has to have some time restraints as to when these people can clean this stuff up. Like, like Jeff said, you're talking 15 years. I think the city, quite honestly, I think a first year law student could win a case for negligence against the city, because you just have not, I guess, put put a the mindset that this is a real problem. I noticed, by the way, quite honestly, there's been a little bit of progress in some of the pigpens that we talked about the last time I was here. 820 Maple is the grass is cut. We're down to two junk cars in the yard. Of course, all the windows are blown out and filled up with either plastic or cardboard. The animals are still running loose on a nightly basis and defecating all over the neighbor's deck and their land. My son has to back out of his garage and look at that sty every day. It's just it's time, folks. Let's let's get the legal department. You're paying them a big I don't what do we pay the the for them to do nothing? $80,000 a year, maybe? I mean, it's time. Let's let's request that they put together an ordinance with some meat. And by the way, I happened to be at the 85th District Court the other day, and that's not all peaches and cream over there either. Father Township brought a matter to the magistrate, and all she did was sit there and play around with some papers, and then demanded that they provide her with a complete copy of the ordinance, which she already would have, if she had enough sense to go on the internet. So I understand there's roadblocks to getting this sort of thing done. But it's time. After 15, 20 years, I can see Jeff's position in other neighbors, like my sister-in-law the other last time I was here, and the Blodjics next to that dump over there on Maple. And by the way, even the schools has taken on a little bit of new life. They cut the grass from the sidewalk to the road. So we'll be back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Campbell.
I just want to mention I've been in contact with Mr. Blue and with the city attorney, and we have that property at Third and Walnut is not in compliance. We are working with the attorney's office to escalate that one again. And then I did want to point out, the council approved some overlays last year. Several of them went down today over at Sixth Avenue, also at Duffy Street, some other places. But I think they went in, they looked very nice. I think it provides some relief. So I'd encourage you to take a look. Thank you.
Ms. Roska.
A while back, it was brought up signage where the social district crosses US 31 and River. Has anything been done with that?
So there is. It says that the social district ends at 31.
Right.
The pedestrian crossing, if you're going to have a drink, is to go at the River Walk or finish your drink. There is signage up at 31.
That says?
Yeah, this is the end of the social district.
Right. But that was the inquiry. It's like, so then what happens? Because the discussion was regarding maybe put up a sign that said, you know, to continue social district, go this way, like towards the River Walk or something. Because who would understand? You don't want them like, oh, I'm going to grab my drink and run across the road before anybody sees me or gulping it. I just think, you know, there was a discussion about there being some kind of clear signage regarding that. And, you know, it is going to be time for our company to be coming and checking things out. And I don't want anybody to get hurt. So I guess one of the things mentioned today was the DDA and giving recommendations. Most of our city councils Most of our city councils, that's all we do is give recommendations, like Parks Commission and, and the Tree Commission. We don't have any ability to make decisions. It, it has to be done by council. It's definitely, you know, they, we need people to give us recommendations because we don't see anything.
Exactly.
That's what I'm saying. So, you know, I appreciate it when, you know, the Tree Commission comes and has their story all neatly together and then we can ask questions. That's it.
Mr. Roski.
Yes. Um, talking about that, I think we talked about that before, Bill, where we brought up about if anybody tries to cross the highway, they'd probably get run over. And I, I think the Legion backed out of, is it the DDA or is it out of the STE area?
It's out of the STE.
Oh, they backed out? Is that brewery still in it down the road?
Yes. Yeah, there's an annual fee for the social district and you're right, the, they did not renew.
So who else is on that end of town? Is that new brewery?
That's one.
Part of it?
Yes.
Okay. So they, the signage, I noticed it. I mean, I've noticed it when I've left the American Legion that it says that the social district ends here and we that live here know that you have to go the boardwalk, but anybody else is not going to understand that because it's very deceiving.
Yeah.
Yep.
But we know anybody drinking is going to walk across that.
That's exactly right. They're going to stick it in their jacket pocket and walk across the street.
Okay. So the next thing is, I was over at that house and I walked around with Jeff. We looked about underneath the roofing where the raccoons were in, the skunks were in. They cut the grass and left the piles of grass through the whole place. Windows are open, it's a mess and Jeff is right there. And we talked about this, I think with, with Seth and I brought this up a couple of years ago. And so I came up to see Jerry after I went over to that house. And I said, Jerry, what are we doing? And he said, well, the guy's losing seven houses and we're in court. Uh, he has a permit that's dated two thousand twenty-four. Uh, I think more action is, should have been done a long time ago. This, he's had that porch off for a couple of years now. And so, I mean, it, it's too late, we're playing games after all this is done. And so you got to get ahead of this stuff with this.
We have to do more follow-up.
Yeah, it's, it's, the blight in this town is terrible. You know, and I know that in the paper was a deal about the tables and decks on, on the street and people are mad about that because handicapped parking was removed from down there. Well, people are not happy about the, these decks out and, and I know the DDA recommends it and all that. What are we doing with bikes on River Street? I mean, a guy passed me today, if I'd have turned around, I'd have walked right into him. And he was moving with one of those motorized bikes.
Okay. So people are allowed to ride their bikes on the street, but obviously they should be using caution, but.
I mean, I seen a woman get hit and man, she really took her bones on that. So, I mean, we used to have an ordinance that no riding on the, on the sidewalk.
I don't think that, they're not allowed to be on the sidewalk, that's, yeah.
Well, that's where they're at. I mean, you see, and kids on the skateboards are flying down there. You know, I used to enforce that. I didn't, I didn't, I, I sat on River Street and caught these kids and, I mean, when we had a different officer, we had the things piled up at the police station, the skateboards. So we got to start enforcing some of these laws and if they're, they've been removed, then they should be put back in there. Okay, thanks.
Mr. K.
The Milwaukee House apparently has some sort of water-holding tank there that is not enclosed in any way, shape or form, and it's becoming quite a site. Dead animals are, are in there floating and I'm just curious what the water is for, why that's there and why isn't there a fence around it? And even on top of it, you get some kids out there playing and it is, there's no blocking that water in any way, shape or form. So I, I need to have that addressed and/or explain why it's the way it is.
Continue with that.
That's it, thank you. Oh, sorry. You going to explain that to me?
Just a little bit. So Teresa Waldo, Community Development Director. What I will do is I will go back and review what the, um, conditions and everything were and what that was on the site plan and then I'll get back to you on it.
Oh, that'd be wonderful. Thanks.
Teresa, while you're up there, could I ask you, the gate is still open on that place on twelve. The grass is not cut. They finally cut on the west side, but inside, you know, the junk is coming out of it.
Okay.
So, I mean, they don't, they don't even lock it up at night anymore.
Okay, right. And I did call and I left a message, but that's all that's been done so far. So I am concerned too why that gate's still open.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Good?
Yes.
Yep.
Two positive things I want to just mention and one was that, and both of them were organized by Chief Glass. One was the Kids Safety Day and there was almost five hundred kids down at the, it was held at the high school. It was impressive. It was impressive from the number of participants that attended, but also the safety people from the community that came, even the Coast Guard plane came. And it was an excellent event with, with food and a lot of things, like each kid that came got a life jacket. I mean, it was, it was a very worthwhile event, so I think our community should be proud of that. The second thing was there was a little police in the park pop up and the Parks Commission and the, uh, police worked together on that and both of them were community outreach with the police and they, that was kind of spur of the moment. It wasn't months in planning and it turned out excellent. We had over a hundred kids there with food and games and the police and the car sirens going down at Morton Park. So it was, that was an excellent, both of them were good programs and put the police in a very positive light Manistee. Want to back the people that came on blight. Yes, we do have a problem there and the people that live by those houses are long-term, many of them lifelong Manistee residents that deserve better and deserve more. And I remember when that particular house next to Jeff's was one of my classmates' house. It was a, a great house and it has just deteriorated and we need to do something that tax-paying people do not have to live by those types of things because their places are all nice and all of a sudden your, your day starts out looking at those or you go to bed looking at those. So I think we need to back them more. And many of them are long-term rentals and so dwell a lot on short-term, but those long-term ones, the inspection, the registration, the contacts, we've got to address those and come down as hard because those are a lot more slum lords from the, the structure of the building than the short-term. One idea that came out of that, talking to the, the neighborhood of Jeff's, was someone suggested, it's an excellent suggestion, too late for this year, but we hold that first, uh, trash pickup of the month to, to get rid of your, uh, large items, your couches, whatever you would have to dispose of that you don't want. And the neighbor suggested, and it was a great idea, he said, we hold it in July, the first week when our town is full of tourists and it's a bad look for Manistee to drive, you know, you're here from wherever, spending your weekend Manistee and you don't know that that's just one meek a month. You think, is this every week? Are these people putting out all this junk? Is this just a junk town? So he suggested moving it like in July, probably to the second week. And I thought if we wait till next year, we'll forget it. So plan ahead, next year that should not be held over the fourth when everybody's in town. And I guess that's it, so thanks.
Mr. Smith.
Everything's been covered, thank you.
Take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.